Okay, Neil, you're ready to go.
Did you get it working?
All right, I'd like to call and order our CDG meeting for tonight, Public Period. We'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. This one, do you call me Vol Place?
Yes, Mr. Burns.
Yep.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Bolt.
Here.
Ms. Meister.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Yep.
We have a form. Like to remind the public that this is being taped tonight. It may not be going out live, but it is being taped. We'll put it on our website. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Burns, who will walk you through the second meeting for this grant.
So, this meeting may seem very familiar to those who attended the first meeting. I think largely what we do is describe to you the process, tell you where we're at in that process, tell you what we went through in our community feedback gathering meeting, what the deliberations of council were as priorities moving forward to apply for the grant, to specify the priorities accordingly. And then we'll probably have a chance for more input or deliberation as we gear up for the final application to the grant. So with that introduction or outline, I'll just get started unless there's points of order. So forgive that I'm using, let's see if I can get this into full screen.
Is that a PowerPoint?
It is a web-based whiteboard called Miro. It can function as PowerPoint. So this has, it can also contain a PowerPoint. So this is information directly from the Hamilton County's instructions on how to apply for the grant and its purposes. The grant is intended to improve community infrastructure and programs in a focus on improving housing. One of the major uses of it can be for improving public spaces such as parks, but other kind of infrastructure projects are bound to serve specific census regions that meet a certain level of income. In Cleves, that would only, the only qualifying community would be to the west of Route 50. That's the, the communities nearer to the back end of the park. We had one idea submitted for that, but other ideas have focused on improvements to the park, which is how we've used the funds in the past. And there's a timeline in here that I was trying to phone to. Hamilton County gave us a very crunched timeline on this, and so we are kind of rushing our public meetings out the door to fulfill those requirements. We have already had our first public input meeting. We are now having meetings at least seven days after that to tell you what we hope to be up to. And following that, we have to have our final grant submission in by, what, April 30th, I think. In the meantime, the public is still free to comment on our plans and provide input as we gather and solidify those plans in the application.
And when is the final decision made? Like council roots on the fence, do we as council have to approve the final submission? What you're submitting for, or is that something we, you don't need us to do?
No, I don't, I don't think there's motions in that. I think we just need a cogent idea to apply for the grant because we're not guaranteed to get the funding anyway.
Alright, gotcha.
At least that's my understanding. So the grant cycle is over three years. The award that we would receive could be distributed over those three years, or it could be used in one month sum at the beginning, and it is modifiable in progress. If you decide to come upon some priorities, you can accelerate your timetable. Again, these are all things that I won't certify, but they are my best understanding of the situation. So, that's where we are, word meeting number two. This timeline is not as helpful as I thought, because I thought it had separate meetings on it, but we did kind of have to rush those out the door so that we could have, meet the application requirements. Here's the, that bit on what's permissible usage, including street improvements or parking improvements, those sort of main things. So, we have, I'm going to break out of that. The, at the beginning of the last meeting, we had just kind of free form input from the community. These were their ideas here. There was, there was varied input. Some of these are thematically related or just kind of duplicated, a shelter, a pavilion, I think this ego might probably be in the same thing. There was advocacy for historical markers, educational programs, anything that would serve the Cleves West community. That tended to focus on sidewalks from lower, along Lower River Road to the park, which is currently, there is no sidewalk there at the moment. Other things were considered, I don't know if they were at my cueing, because they're kind of ideas we've already had, but water fountains, new equipment that's ADA compliant for actual recreation for wheelchair-bound individuals, lighting, electricity, restrooms. Some of these are out of scale of the grant. The grant is projected to be 50,000 over three years with some, and definitely not exceeding 100,000. The exact numbers kept not a secret, but intentionally vague because they don't know the answer themselves. It just depends on how many people apply to it. I then presented different ideas we developed in the parks meeting. They're listed here. I don't know if that's going to copy onto our video feed, but some of the ideas are the same. There's camp shelters, there's water fountains, wheelchair swing, new walking paths, sun paving, again, electricity lights, new playground features near the main soccer field area, a wiffle ball field for competitive wiffle ball, additional pickleball courts, stands for our existing sports facilities, sand volleyball, mini golf, concession stand, and parkour exercise equipment. We're all pitched to the public at that time. There are, I don't know if there's, I don't know the degree to which I should get into each of these ideas for the benefit of austerity. I will try to do it with lighting ramp, okay? There are competitive wiffle ball fields, leagues, a public installate, a more permanent installation than just putting out the back south might involve turf. It's about 100 feet of area. It would fit lots of places. It would be something novel that's not really around in the area. Frisbee golf is an idea that I've kept around with the parks committee for a long time. It is troubled by the fact that most of this area back here is in a flood plain and therefore not allocated for grant funding, so it's really something we'd have to do on our own dime. One of the main things we developed recently as an idea is, it's in light of the new features that have gone into the, to the park, near the front entrance of the park, the playground, the pickleball court, and basketball court being here. There's also a line of trees that this is currently obscuring, and a line of trees that has been installed here. One of the ideas would be to put a walking path so that people watching their kids around here could have a short thing to, to exercise on or do something while their kids were at play. So the path itself was an option. We've also penciled in, and this was an idea favored by, the idea favored by council, is to put a shelter in about this area with access to the actual pavement part that we have, with shade for watching kids at play. And depending on the scale that we can afford, I think this is where I would place it first. And if we had, we could afford a larger scale, I would extend it toward the baseball area because that's the next most natural group of people that consume that shelter. We'll discuss that in a little bit more depth because it is what the grant will probably be about as we gather information. Again, we talked about putting other features in different places at the park. There's not much going on near the soccer fields right now, so you could talk about putting in seesaws or the, I forget what this kind of ball is called.
Funnel ball.
Funnel ball?
Funnel ball.
Funnel balls. Permanent cornhole installations, horseshoe pits, these are things we can do in our own time too, but that's one need that's not currently met. Not discussed at that time, I don't think, was that, yeah, I've gotten some additional visuals on just putting in public chess station, chess tables. That could be a nice feature in different spaces too. Actual handicap servicing equipment was discussed. I believe it's kind of the, the third option, so we'll get into a little bit more, but here's a visual of actually installing wheelchair accessible recreation equipment to augment the tiny little bit that's already in the playground that we constructed last time. Again, this is the lighting ramp. One, again, this is something developed recently in parks, is the idea that we could put in additional drinking fountains, or actually the first drinking fountains. There is one potable water source near, near the park, near the main shelter, the Blue Light Fields five and six, where I'm trying to highlight with my cursor. So, there. But there are no drinking fountains. Laying them would require digging and require plenty of copper and labor, and so by putting in probably only about four drinking fountains, we could use the whole amount of the grant. The first would, the first in priority would probably be near the new playground equipment. The second's here in between baseball. The third, near the main installation, and the fourth, near BMX. And each of those has a measurement length in these slides here. This can be exported in some usefulness. Oh, and sorry, we discussed another one near the, near the trailhead, principally for the bike community, I think that would serve. There was other input saying we should build bleachers. These are things I put in for dog maintenance because people are locking their dogs in the pickleball courts and they make a mess. And I think that concluded the briefs on most of those. So, when, when we discussed at the end of the meeting with council, this was their top three priorities as given then. Four out of the five was the shelter as their primary concern. The sidewalk on Lower River Road and ADA swing were also given high priority. Those couple votes were wiffle ball, water fountains, and a short bike path or walking path. So, since then, we've gotten only a little information back from JMA so far. I, I think Jennifer Flatter is apprehensive about getting the shelter built on that limited of funds. She's going to come back to us with some numbers. In other meetings, the mayor has gotten the idea that there might be more money available, but now the estimates for what they cost are still in a narrative uncertainty there. It is possible to supplement this with COVID funds that need to be spent this year, but that would need to be a decision that we actually make rather than counting on it. I, so what I've done in the background, again, there's not a lot of activity that's going on, is I've asked for estimates, basically just, what's the simplest, like 16 by 16 shelter? And then what additional size could plausibly be afforded? I think when I outlined that bike path, which is a total bike path, walking path, if that were concrete, that would exceed the amount that we have allocated for this. So even just a concrete pad to put a shelter on would probably be pretty expensive. I don't know about the other materials. We're waiting for information. I asked to be included as stretch goals, that there be an actual swing installation and a chess installation. So chess tables, because I took the time to get some visuals from different manufacturers, they can be concretes, they can be, I think the right one for our needs would be this kind of the, the plastic decking stuff. Because it's a two-person game, there's no need for four chairs, so you can make two sides of a handicap accessible, wheelchair accessible rather. Instead of just having chairs around the table, you could have multiple of them. It depends on how much you want to spend on that. But it's also another activity you can do at the park. And again, it's not around, I don't know where the nearest one would be. I'm attracted to the idea personally of having some kind of swing on the south side of the shelter, just nice for watching the kids. I would prefer that it be shaded because being south-facing, you'll be straight into that summer sun. And I don't think you'll have gained too much in terms of comfort if you don't have the option to do that in the sun. These are some public installations. They're not as easy to find as you think unless we just get a chain and a bench and hang it from some rafter, which I don't know what the public, how public, more durable materials requirements would. I, normally a park has to be tougher, right? So I don't know how people would handle that if they chose to. So, I'm just pointing out that wheelchair compliant, so it can be similar in design. This one again is, is just, it's not a heavy gauge chain, but holding down, you can go along to that. You're going, I thought this was a cute installation, and it has kind of a campfire feel, but not a shelter. So with that turbo summary of everything that we've been up to and that unfortunately short list of things that we've done in the past eight days, I think basically what we should do is ask if there's any further comments about priorities from the public or comments on the shelter as a plan. And then if there's any further deliberations from council, I think we should hear those after that. So anybody opposed to that plan? So, anybody from the public have anything to say about the shelter as a plan? Oh, I'm sorry, the other piece of information that we did get before I make time for that, the sidewalk priority for, the, the idea of having a sidewalk on Lower River Road is that there's basically no path where you are not on the road to get from that, those communities came through the park. Multiple of us have taken a look at that and, and said, there's challenges that, there's trenches that need to be dug, the more desirable side of the road for the improvements is not the more desirable road, side of the road for where you would want to actually walk, maybe a crosswalk. There's fences and electricity poles that may need to be removed if we put the sidewalk in this, in this long spot. So, there could be complications on that. And there's already a developed idea of folding that into a road improvement plan that John has prepared, is ready for some submission to some other grant that I'm not getting the name of. If you don't mind, John.
OPWC.
OPWC.
Yes.
Okay. So I think we're taking that feedback apart, and what it looks like circumstantially is that there might be a better way to solve that than the CDG grant. So that, I don't know if council wants to deliberate on the second priority, third priority, if you take that out of the equation. And that, that is the only other development. So with that, if there are any public comments at this time, we'd love to hear them.
I like the shelter idea, but the village currently has, what, three shelters back there? They're not being utilized very well, I, I don't think, except for just people strolling in, and is there any, are there any improvements that we can make to those shelters where could entice or lure the, the public into use them more frequently? For like parties or gradu, graduation parties or family reunions?
I think having it located closer to the new swings and new activity area would increase the usage of it.
The biggest problem we have with the two, with the one shelter, the bigger one, is there's no easy way to get to it. You have to put every, all your picnic supplies and stuff in a wagon or cart and tow it out into, into the grass area. Something closer to a parking lot would be more desirable, I think, but now the cars have to drive all the way out to it. We don't want cars on the grass now they're driving out all the way to that picnic shelter. It's just so far off the beaten path off of the parking lot to utilize it. That's, that's one reason it's not being used a lot.
I think it's, it's certainly a fair point worth considering, especially if we end up scrapping one idea or the other, what, what other improvements at the shelters could make it work better. I will say for their usage, it's normally context dependent, right? When the BMX is having a meet, they're using that one off to the, to the second north corner. When soccer's in session, they're using the main shelter, right? And presumably when people want a little shelter at the end of installation, they would want to use this one. So I think that's really the step here. Neil, let's go, we'll, we'll take it back up, right?
I was just going to say, wouldn't it be put just like a gravel path that the cars could drive, they might drop off their stuff, and then come back? Would that be cheaper than building a whole new? Shouldn't the first leg come there?
I'm sorry, what, you want a gravel path to the main one? Is that what you're considering?
Yeah, you're saying that they have to carry everything through the grass. Would it be possible to put some kind of a driving path?
It's probably possible. It's probably more expensive than you'd like to think to get the material, otherwise we'd have better materials in the main parking lots as well.
Oh, okay.
And then there's probably logistical concerns of, is that, I can think of two, is that gravel going to travel to any of the fields that we're interested in? Like baseball sews grass in between the fields. I don't know why, but it seemed important to them, so I think they would begrudge that. It is near soccer fields. The other thing is when we have that kind of hard surface gravel, it will eventually fill in with soap.
And weeds. Could it present a danger to getting cars driving, kids around?
Sure, but people do what they want right down the road. So can we have better policies? Well, we could work on that in parks and grants too. Consideration on the shelter, I think what we're talking about.
Mine was in sort of the short ways, it was just a couple hundred ideas that we wanted to, you know, photos of how to consider, and then it would be, if you're all familiar with, like the Green Township, a little walking path in soccer field from the head, periodic throughout the, no, I'm sorry, benches located on the walking paths, they have on benches, something that makes you, and the other thing I thought about was, you know, if you wanted to even do something more for the bikers. I used to go down there when I, when I used to go down there and ride our bikes, and, you know, there was no other place to put your bike other than if you just use the kickstand, what about bicycle storage racks? You know what I'm talking about, you put, pull it into it and you lock it up. You can have a series of, a couple of those down there so that if you're done biking, you can lock it up, other than having to take it back to your car, store it, lock it up, whatever. Something of that nature, not sure if that's plausible or something else to bring it up. And then lastly, more portments, which if that's something more, we can't use it for maintenance or, and I think operational concerns, so if that's a critique, we can take that up as an issue, but I don't think it's for the grant.
Any deliberation on the priority? You could take 10 of, 10 ideas like that and, like, that's not how we were guided to impose this grant. We've been told repeatedly, do one thing, it's going to look better. Right? If we spend $50,000 on scrappy things, we could do a lot of stuff. We could have bike racks, we could have A water fountain, we could have ADA compliant equipment, we could have something else next to the soccer field. Like we could do that. We're told that that's not the most successful application. I'd be, like, I'd be happier with that, but I, I like to trust other people's wisdom from time to time.
So if you put in for the grant, for the shelter, we get more money than what we're expecting, but yes, some of the people are going to put in the shelter, there's extra money, you can still do some of those other smaller projects, correct? Or do they all have to be specifically outlined in the application?
That's a question for our consultant, I think. John, you're the last person to have some shit in their head, if you have any information.
You can, you can use outside. If you have funds left over, you can use it outside the outline that you originally had. Yeah. They, they don't mind that you, you know, that you, you're utilizing all the money in that park. It would have to stay in that park though. You couldn't take it and bring it over to stay.
Certainly an extra money, we could do some maybe smaller items like the chest table, water, micro accessory.
Yes.
We probably wouldn't be throwing any COVID money in if we had extra grant money.
It's a positive.
But that, that COVID money could go towards some of the other smaller things too.
True.
Yeah. The smaller for you.
John, was it your point that if, let's say for example, I'm just using numbers, if we get the $57,000 and our shelter costs 50, and we got $57,000, so if we're going to use the 7, does that what you're implying? We can use the 7,000 for other items within the park, so. So a lot depends, I guess, on what our cost estimates come back as to the projects we're working on.
One thing that was brought up in the committee was resurfacing the basketball court for durability. I forget what that epoxy cost, it wasn't in the hundreds of dollars.
No, it was, like $8,000. Yeah.
Now, you showed that one handicap swing. Are we going to go to other issues or are we still staying on shelters right now?
So far as I know, this is the last chance to provide real guidance as we form the grant, so anything you want to say about?
Okay. If, if we gear ourselves toward improving or getting handicap-friendly play equipment, what are we looking at there? 15,000, 20, I just don't, like that unit right there, what, how much money are we looking at for something like that?
The, the things that look like, pardon my pen, the things that just look like this tend to be a few thousand dollars, but they, they also tend to look like they belong in somebody's backyard.
And they could get tore out if they see it's been used.
Yeah. I think, and this is just impression, I think each of these, I don't know if each of them would be about 25 or if both of them together would be about 25, but when, when I looked at this, my memory was that it was not going to consume the whole grant. the whole grant. Um, but what I did not discover was like other features like unable swing. Um, but one other playground that people come up with that's interesting for that community, I did not get an answer. You want to deliberate, Serge Offspring?
Is there room over by the pickleball court? You know, you talk about a shelter over there. Most people aren't gonna sit there and just watch people play pickleball. There's a, a playground equipment that's closer to the parking lot, correct? The pickleball and all that, that's closer to the parking lot, right?
Your parking lot?
Is there a room in that area where the pickleball and basketball and four, uh, handicap accessible?
Yeah.
Play area?
As well. So.
And that would be ea- easier to get a wheelchair to it.
The existing V D A equipment, I believe, is these, is this ramp here. Um, the rest is not accessible to, uh, wheelchair. So this is, this is fully able. This is wheelchair bound.
Okay.
The, there is one well over here that we have to dodge and now some trees that we planted. Um, but it's the, you know, like, this is all distance you need for, like, to be baseball. There's tons of room over here. I'm sure there's another one somewhere. Like, we could stretch that way all we wanted. It's very likely that in this corner, we could come up with the room to put in other features. And, and we would want to, right? We wouldn't wanna repave. So paving is expensive.
Now, does that part of the park flood?
Yes.
Okay. So anything we put in, we, we have to make sure we'll sustain through flood, including chest pigs. Um, that's why I think perhaps the wooden chain type swings would not hold up very well.
But.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. Like, the, the ones that I showed, I, I think that's kind of a fantasy. I think that's in a night, despite interstate, right? That's, that's a little clearer, but, um, actually I don't have the work lines, so I'm gonna stop handling. And no, I would not do, you know, I don't have any interest in, I, maybe we get the value for it, for just to have this available for 2,000 bucks, you know? This looks as sturdy, well, maybe there's a version that's as sturdy as our swings. This doesn't look like that much thicker of a gauge than our swing set. This look, makes it look like it's back to age, but, um, for 2,000 bucks, you make it possible. It's not huge for us either. So if there's an in-between model that does not cost 25,000, um, all the better. This looks like it'll stand up to the floods.
Yes, it does.
We primarily focus on the shelters. Kind of have the opinion too, if they're not, if our current shelters are underutilized, another shelter may or may not be that they are paid aside of. Do we have any idea of, of the overall usage, you know, as far as like when soccer season's in, utilize more denim, more utilize when the V M X in session? But just for the general public to use on an ongoing basis, you know, if they're not, if our current ones are not being used, another one's just gonna be another one that's underutilized.
I can take that point, but I, I really, I personally believe that the proximity of the playground's gonna make this a home base and valuable in a lot of respects.
So proximity of where we wanted them is key.
I mean, there's kids playing basketball. There's kids playing basketball every night. There's people playing pickleball. Well, darn if I know now if it's underwater again, but.
It's not.
But, um, on, on the regular. Um, and there's people using the playground on the regular. So I think that, that one stands a better chance. People use the other one. It's just, I wouldn't, without staying there every night and studying how often people are going there as they walk through the fields or walk their dog, and how many weekends somebody bothers to have a, a family reunion there. I think that's once or twice per summer, the latter part. People walking through and using it at other occasions to hang out, I think is pretty regular. Just depends on the temperature.
I think a big difference to people utilizing them shelters for things as a family reunion or big thing is the lack of restroom facilities. But what kind of, you know, what are we gonna pick down there?
It used to be utilized the most years ago for birthday parties, small things. And we had portholets, I think, two or three of them scattered around the walking track. That is a big issue.
I mean, personally, I myself would be more inclined to grab some snacks and take my grandkids everywhere and play on the swings and sit at the shelter there rather than go over to the shelter that's on the other side of the park and there's nothing around for them to do.
Except for volleyball, so. You should get all of those.
I think somebody to the other, the other activities has a lot to do with usage.
So I guess on another note then, we're going to make our parks more attractive and we are going to have more usage. And it proves us to be looking for more restroom facilities, which I guess we'd be another time discussion for that there. Again, if the goal is we're gonna utilize our parks more, I mean, seriously, who wants to build a park, eat there, drink there, and say, I have to go to the bathroom, where do I go? There's a lot of weeds, but the point being is, is you're gonna provide some facilities if you're gonna utilize your parks than not. So for another discussion, another time, I think if, again, that needs to be kind of another topic for.
And that COVID money that we have to spend, that's not, there's not as many restrictions in that. That's something we'd use towards something like that. At lunchtime, we were looking at trailer type restrooms. They're basically portholets on wheels with nicer facilities around them. But you couldn't pull it out and get it out of, if there flood came.
Those have come a long way since.
You could move it to hide.
Since back when we talked about it before. I know, like.
A lot of festivals.
San Antonio, Fort Myers area, because of the hurricane, they have a lot of those down there now, and they're actually rather nice.
Yeah, yeah.
They have like this, this farm festival.
Yeah, there's a lot of festivals they have. But the fact that they can be moved is attractive option.
Pull out, they're right there.
Yeah. If you have a vehicle strong enough to do it. We looked at it. We hadn't priced two of them, male, female.
I'd imagine how it costs might not be, uh.
Well, this was 10 years ago. I'm thinking, if I remember correct, eight to 12,000, but I could be way off.
They really have those trailer type things in, when I was down Searo in Orlando, it was past summer. They utilize those throughout the park down there.
And one of the attractive ideas of that is that you don't have to dig. And that's what we were looking at at the time, to go get underground plumbing and stuff for a bathroom. We didn't have that option. It lifts it up and I think there's ramps on each side that you can walk up.
You mean handicap accessible ones?
Yes, yes. And I guess they fold up and go up like a tamper type thing when you put it up. But that's a discussion for another time, I guess. Now, that, that drawing up on the right, are those handicap swings? Yeah, right there.
I, I don't know that this is necessarily for wheelchair bound, but this is, I think. This is, this is meant for people with special needs, but I don't know to, why it's.
You could have to lift them up out of the wheelchair and put them in.
And if that's an idea, that's okay. If they're not hooked up to stuff, that might be an option.
Yeah.
So to the last public meeting, the, uh, I'm more flinging it, become a worthy ADA swingers.
I mean, I don't know what a, what a new swing installation would cost. It would hurt to have that near the existing community playground. For general purposes, they include these as well. I wouldn't be sad for new features.
Especially if it attracted the kids and family.
Okay. Did we shift away at all from the shelter?
I think the shelter's the most, I'm giving it the sidewalks potentially, I'll be.
Taken care of later.
Taken care of later than the indoor and the second floor.
Any large descent for them?
I would probably flip flop them, but I'm not gonna discriminate anything that the majority wants to do. But I would probably like to see the ADA equipment. If the purpose of the grant is to somehow benefit and aid that area and the people that live in that area, um, either one of them would probably work. I think the idea of an ADA is gonna be more attractive in a grant application, I think. That's my personal feeling, um, than a shelter would be.
I think it benefits us overall, you know, it benefits the entire, well, all inclusive, I would say, for, you know, to make sure that, you know, our parks are everybody.
I, the, the, two weeks ago, like.
I, I think, I think last time what you did is everybody kind of prioritized, now might be the opportunity to re-prioritize that and to re-discuss it.
Two major items now versus three.
I don't know what I think. You presented it.
Yeah.
I would build a frisbee golf.
Yeah, he wants frisbee golf.
The applications do what, April, again?
Yeah.
So you do have more time to get more information from Jennifer and gets more information on prices, what, what these things would actually cost us. And that may have an impact on the decision as well.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I know. I mean, real, seriously, I was only half a flight. Like, my, my inclination is to try to split the bait. Um, like, is, is it really that terrible to buy for, for both things? But then I, I think if you take that as a thesis and one doesn't work out, then the thesis is still valid. You still have a grant. So we wanna build in this same area, a small shelter for parents to get out of their sun and, and more playground equipment. And, um, you know, the, the structure of that could be, okay, well, we wanna build a shelter that's like a picnic area, but that is not in scope. We can't afford that. What we can afford is having five of these swing things running around because, like, I seriously doubt the people for five of them, right? We could have a couple of those or some, some like umbrella shading things that give some relief. If not a new picnic area, we can save that. You know, like, that can be, you can contingency plan that way. Um, and if, yeah, the central topic sentence is just new playground equipment, here's our top five features that we think will burn through the running. We'll attack them in order. Um, I wouldn't be ashamed to know that.
I have a quick question. When you say, you know, you have five of these, 10 of these, we're, we're on hold with this, we're talking material. Does this grant allow for labor installation?
Yeah. Uh, prevailing wage or federal requirements? Um, I asked the question of Jennifer about the, the water. One of those features could be a water fountain, um, which frankly would serve that area well, if you ask me. Um, if you only did one, it might be affordable in this range. Um, I asked her if we could pay our waterworks to do it. And I think the idea was that's a little sketchy, but what we can do is put in for the materials and then pay for the installation yourself using their guys. Uh, so, you know, if a water fountain costs 1,500 and it costs 1,000 feet of copper, you're still spending significant money. There's still significant labor. There is still a consideration of our covenants on the land and digging and such. Um, but you can do the material and use other funds to, to supplement the labor if you want to. But labor is allowed.
We also have to remember that COVID grant money, um, that the park would also be a, I'm sure drinking fountain would also qualify to use that money for. You know, they may not be as picky about how you get the water sourced in there with this other grant money, you know?
Kind of like, you know, the idea of a water fountain being used with other funds and capitalizing on the grant money for the things that.
The bigger, the bigger.
The bigger items, yeah.
Well, I don't know that Point Tacon, running the four fountains costs about 25,000 in materials. And then Eric said probably double that or more. So it's not, it's not small in and of itself, so.
Now, when you were talking about one located in this area, that's what I was.
Divided by four.
I'm just saying, that's what she mentioned, so.
Okay. Um, John, do you think that that is foolishly ignoring the advice to do one big thing? Appreciate it.
Stick to one big thing.
One too, so you could do the.
I mean, you could put in, you could put in a grant and ask the world, you know, put a grant in and ask for, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, nine thousand dollars and get, you know, 30,000 dollars a year. That's what I would do. I would capitalize on as much money towards a hundred thousand as you could.
Now, this item that you've got up here now, that's like a two-person swing, right? With shaded area. So a mother could sit in that and watch her kids on the playground equipment. He'd get some relief from the sun.
It's a pergola over top, yeah.
And would it sustain itself through flooding?
And the materials made out of.
So we could put two of those in and maybe the ADA swing.
Yeah.
We can always put a shelter and always if we, if we can find great funding for, I don't know.
I think if you follow in John's advice and applying good, good pivot items for the grant, I think we should do the shelter, but I could be including shelter and including like the handicap accessible playground equipment to add to our existing.
Yeah, yes.
I think maybe that might.
I think you can stretch the, so like, you can put up some four by fours and some plywood and call that a shelter. Um, no, John, no.
Just make the kids eat it.
No, but, but I think it makes sense. So keeping it to one or two things. You say that, okay, what we want is a serviceable picnic area and, uh, ADA s- swing set or swing set that includes ADA at a minimum. Um, and, you know, if, if then, if you can justify asking for a hundred thousand, but we can do it for 75, um, you can still accomplish both your, if, it, it depends what those numbers come back. But in terms of forming a thesis for the grant, I think that's a good way to frame it. And then if Jennifer comes back with, sorry, the most basic 16 by 16 shelter is 75,000 itself, um, then you pivot. So can we take that away from this meeting? Start with those two where the bulk of the justification for large funds is, and the easiest thing to shrink, if we, we're planning for a 64 foot one, 16 would be fine. Um, or what, I think it's, yeah, it's over 120 feet to get the baseball one, but that'd be a, that'd be a nice shelter. Okay. Okay.
And that wouldn't include tables to go underneath, we could use COVID funds for that.
Yes.
We're not gonna put that in with the turnip. Right now, we're looking at just a basic.
Put a surface down on a, a new rooftop.
Cause we do have tables at some of the others that we used to, they haven't floated away, have they?
No, we chained them down now.
And I think they were chained down.
They have. They just, they had floated away.
And there were some grills standing alongside of them, we're doing this, are there still any grills left?
Yeah, there's one.
One?
Yeah, we can look at the whole catalog of typical park accessories as we do this. But we don't have to bore them with the details, we can sell them, we have a plan. Yeah, that's gonna make this a much more comfortable environment and serve bigger, bigger communities. Okay, that's the thesis we'll take away. We encourage the public to comment in any time up to April twenty third. The grant will be submitted on April thirtieth, but realistically, our consultants need at least seven days to get the grant formalized. There's no sense in trying to change their mind at that point. Public comments will be welcome, they can be sent along any of the email addresses found at our new village website at villageofpleas.us. And the mayor has office hours, I don't know if you want to specify those, they may change, but you can come by this building.
Pretty much here, most days, um, it really depends. I, I float in usually, John and I talk as early as usually seven, I actually had two other phone calls before that. So I have no problem with anybody contacting me by phone, I can put that information out there. Some of it is already on the website, and I do have people calling that number. My biggest issue is there's, there's some other times I'm just not available, so we put a, there's a open and closed with a time, if we're gone, it'll tell you what time we're coming back. But I do think from the standpoint of giving the information out, uh, I'll make sure whatever information you need to get out, I'll provide opportunities for people to give input. I, I do wanna take one statement that Kevin made earlier, and you can see how these numbers have changed. Uh, I contacted the head of the grant process, trying to sort of pin her down on what we could actually get. And I have a blank look on my face right now because I didn't get an answer back, so I've been contacting her again. I'm just concord, you're probably better off asking for, for a, a larger amount. The cents I got was more in the ninety thousand dollar range, but trying to pin her down on the exact amount was not easy.
It's not gonna happen.
Yeah, yeah, I got that cents, cause that's what I was trying to do again, right?
It's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
They're gonna look at the applications they get, but they're also gonna look at the quality of the application. What are these guys wanting to do with the money? And one community might get a little more if their projects are deemed higher quality.
The accessible is attractive to them.
Yeah.
I don't think of the nine hour.
Anything else, Kevin? Not for me. Public, any comments you wanna make? Hey, at this point then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Yours by Mr. Bolton, one second. Mr. Meister, Mr. Meister? So we have a second, is there any further discussion? Would you call a roll?
Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Mr. Bolton.
Yes.
Mr. Meister.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
And we are adjourned. Thank you very much for coming. Yeah, you cut it, and hopefully this actually videotaped, if it did, I'll.
No, you were live.
You did go live.
Yeah, we watched it.
I do not understand.